Let me call to order the October 8, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Pottstown Borough Council. Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Chief Hand, Emergency Services, anything to add?
Yeah, thank you, please.
Yep. So, good evening, everyone. I wanted to follow up with my, first of all, my report is on the agenda, but I wanted to follow up. Last year, we got a grant from HAAS, H-A-A-S. It's a device that's in our vehicles. And what that device does is, you can see the numbers up here, it alerts drivers that are on the roadway that there's an emergency vehicle in the road that be alert and cautious for it. In the course of a year, a thousand people, firefighters, and police are struck by vehicles. And this device is designed to slow them down. If you can see, that's our yearly total for what we do with our apparatus. But last month, we alerted 1,763 drivers that there's an emergency vehicle on the road somewhere in Pottstown. Now, the number skewed because we have five trucks that have that. So sometimes all five are there, and it might alert the same driver five times. But I just wanted to follow up and let you know that, you know, through your support with DVR PC, we were able to get this grant, and it does a great job for our responders and our community. So, thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks. Infrastructure, Councilor Leibertenski?
The report's in your bag.
Anything to add?
No.
Transportation, Councilor Pross.
There is not a meeting.
All right. And ordinance review?
There is not a meeting, but we will be meeting this month.
Right.
Economic development?
Ms. Lee Clark. Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. So, for this month's report, I wanted to start with something that already happened, which was FET. Thank you to those that attended. It was another beautiful evening. Thanks to all of the sponsors and all the people that came out. Just one of the stats that we have been following, 35% of this year's attendees were first-time attendees. So, it's growing in popularity, and it seemed like everybody had a very nice time. DIWAG has, and if that is incorrect, I'm sorry, it's a German company, and I'm not sure that that's the right pronunciation, but I think it is, DIWAG. They moved into the industrial complex. They're a 160-year-old company. They do deal in steel. And they picked this particular location because of access to the northeastern quadrant and their customers. Most notably, they did an Apple warehouse, and then they also did steel fittings in the, one of the towers in New York. So, they are certainly something that we are looking for in that industrial. A lot of what goes on in the industrial complex, I know, is not understood as far as businesses, but they are really, really, really important businesses for employment here. We also, I want to encourage all of you to visit Opavera, which is at 300 East High in the, in the terminal, Contessa, which is a small plate, which is where some of you will remember the pub was located, and Caribbean Paradise, which is now in the space that held Welcome to the Avenue. All of these are businesses that have moved into town. Restaurants are on very, very, very small margins, so please get out and support these restaurants. It's really important. And that's where my pitch goes. We're almost at Halloween. Every day is shop small, right? We, we celebrate it once a year, one day. Every day needs to be shop small. So, I want to remind you about that. Theater has Wizard of Oz coming up. It runs from 10:10 to 10:26. It is an economic driver in this town, and we need to support it. And even if you can't buy tickets or get to a show, I would look at it from an aspect of, is there something that you can do to donate to the theater for its ongoing presence here? A hundred-plus people have participated in the sessions that we've been holding on the Streetscape project. So, the next process will be, they'll be doing some presentations of conceptual drawings and concepts of projects that possibly could be instituted. And then, of course, the ones that seem to be the ones that most people want to go forward on, we'll start looking for public funding for it. I felt like, in the news is, I really needed to address this, the government shutdown. So, what does that possibly have to do with economic development? Doesn't really affect paid from an aspect of econo, in our everyday operations. But we were working in our office yesterday on the U.S. Census tracks, because as you probably are aware, or you should remember, we have three qualified opportunity zones in the borough of Pottstown. One is in the Keystone Boulevard area, and then one is High Street. And the message that we got was, due to the lapse of federal funding, portions of this website will not be updated. Any inquiries submitted will not be answered until appropriations are enacted. We are also got a double whammy here, because in Pennsylvania, we have no state budget that has passed. So, this is doing irrevocable damage to school districts, food banks, workforce programs, nonprofit organizations, community colleges, which we have in our area. So, you say, okay, so what does that have to do with economic development? What it has to do with economic development is, all of those entities, just like businesses, byproducts. They support the local economy. And when they are not getting paid to pay their bills, they can't support this local economy. So, I would encourage citizens, I would encourage elected officials, to talk to your elected officials at the state and federal level, and get them all back to the table, no matter what side of the aisle you're on. And that is my report.
Okay. And for the land bank?
Okay. Pretend it's a different person. Land Bank. So, Land Bank did consider a property on Grant Street that has long been blighted. It was being brought up for judicial sale. It would have exposed the land bank to title issues, potential title issues, and the property could have been taken back. It was also a very high opening bid. The property did not, we monitored it. The property did not receive any bids on it. So, we will be continuing to watch that property. And that is my report for land.
Very good. Thank you. BID, Mr. Minofstra.
Yes, we met twice in this past month. And tonight, if you're going to correct me, please feel free to do so at any point. We met twice, and we have coalesced around a concept that, that is, we're going to try to have an event on, at the same time that Santa, Mr. Santa, will come. And Mr. Santa, I understand, is coming on December 6, okay? And Mr. Santa comes at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And then, there's really nothing to do between 3 o'clock in the afternoon and 6 o'clock, when the magical Christmas tree is, is lit, okay? So, we're trying to bridge that gap between 3 o'clock and 6 o'clock, and provide an event or events in the downtown, okay, which could include music, we're working on that, it could include food, it could include a lot of things. But it's going to include fun and something for people to do between 3 and 6, and keep the people there, okay, and keep, keep them active in the downtown, because our businesses need to be supported, and we're trying to do that. And one of the things that we have done is that we have enlisted the feedback of the shareholders, i.e. the people, to see, to get their ideas about this as well, because you don't want to do something that they don't want to do. So, we're looking at December 6. There's a lot of work to do between now and then. And we will have something between 12, or sorry, between 3 and 6, between Mr. Santa and the magical Christmas tree lighting. All right? That's my report.
Good. Okay. Human relations, Ms. Levin Good.
Good evening, councilors, Council President, Madam Mayor. National Hispanic Heritage Month continues until October the 15th. Also, October is recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, National Bully Prevention Month, and LGBT History Month. The Commission's next October meeting is scheduled to be held on Wednesday, October the 15th, in council chambers at 6:00 p.m., and all are welcome to attend.
Thank you. Anyone from the library? No. Okay. Councilor Kirkland, anything from the records?
I'll have my report on Monday.
Monday? And Councilor Lindsay is not here. Okay. How about a report from our mayor? You ready?
Excuse me. Good evening. Happy October. Since last time, I spoke to the incoming tri-county leadership class about my leadership journey. I want to thank Jenna Armato. I love that class, and I'm honored to be a presenter. Peggy Lee Clark, and Paige, and the volunteers, and everyone in the borough, thank you for pulling off FET. It was beautiful. There was no trash. Everyone had a really good time. It was very welcoming. We also had the pet fair, which there was a huge turnout for. And I attended the Wheels for Another Day Suicide Prevention Awareness. It was their first annual fundraiser. It was their truck and Jeep show. It was very cool. It was in Manatani Park after the pet fair, and I met a lot of people who had tricked out their Jeeps to honor veterans in their lives that they had lost from suicide. So, it was very moving. And they partner with National Alliance on Mental Illness, and will be doing more fundraisers in the borough. We had, the DAR had their remembrance ceremony at the memorial wall at Zion's UCC on the 238th anniversary of the Constitution signing. If you haven't been to the back of that church and seen the memorial, it's very cool. The stepping stones up to the memorial are actually the old tombstones. There are, like, tons of people buried in that one area, and because they're so old, the tombstones fell. And so, they are literally, the stepping stones up to the memorial. It's absolutely beautiful. Chestnut Street, our Chestnut Street Garden, we had our ribbon cutting for the sidewalk mural. If you haven't walked by, it's so cool. I want to thank Marie Hay and Pottstown Community Arts, Mosaic, and all the volunteers. It's absolutely beautiful. Like, the kids painted it. Please go see. Alexa, Justin, Zach, I want to say thank you. You guys did an amazing job pulling off dinner, hosting the Montgomery County Borough Association at Rivet. I haven't been able to attend in past years. It was great. It was great seeing people from Narberth, and Royersford, and Hattborough, and all these people from, like, an hour away in Montgomery County came here. And they were all thrilled. They hadn't been to Pottstown either ever, or in a really long time, and didn't recognize it, and were taking notes on all the restaurants they're going to be eating at. So, thank you. It was a beautiful event. Oh, I also presented with the pro bono committee for the Montgomery County Bar Association on Pottstown's experience with the unhoused, and the challenges of attainable housing in Montgomery County. And I presented along with Solicitor Bellotamy and the, the legal aid department. And then, Doug Slick and I met with the Pottstown Veterans Group, which honestly, I didn't realize that they had a, a location on High Street. So, we're going to help them find another location to expand, so they can be home to a lot of the other veterans groups in Pottstown. And today, I'm very excited, we met with the new executive director of the Red Cross. As some of you may remember from '22, when we had our Hill Street explosion, the, the organization that came out that helped house everybody and feed everyone and do counseling sessions was the Red Cross. They were absolutely phenomenal in our time of need, and they have programs for emergency preparedness that they offer for free, so they may, I'm going to have them come and present at one of our, our meetings. And, okay, upcoming events. There's a lot, guys. Sorry. I'm going to be, try to be quick. Tomorrow, 10:09 is the cluster fundraiser at Rivet from 5:30 to 8. Edgewood Cemetery cleanup is Saturday, 10 to 2. Also, Saturday at 10, the DAR is presenting the St. Clair marker. Then, Sunday, sorry, October 12th, also on November 15th, from 10 to 1, the Delaware Riverkeeper Network is doing a Learn to Fish at Riverfront Park. And I think it's free. So, that's very cool. And then, North End Swim Club, they are doing their fall fundraiser. Every fundraiser they have had this year, guys, has been, like, rained out, and they, you know, I think I got a membership just to help them out, because it was, I couldn't even get to the pool this year, unfortunately. But they're finally having their fall fundraiser, so please, 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 go. It's 2 to 5 on the 12th. They have basket raffles. It's a lot of fun. But Oktoberfest is at the library. That's their fundraiser on the 16th of October from 6 to 9. Also on, oh, sorry, October 16th, also from, sorry, no, October 17th, sorry, 3 to 5, is the Roller Mills 300th Ribbon Tying Ceremony. There is a business that has been in the borough for 300 years. That's crazy. So, I'm excited that I get to be a part of that. We have Haunt on High on the 18th, 12 to 3. Community Shred Day is the 19th, Potts Grove High School, from 11 to 1. And then, we have a lot of Halloween stuff. I'm, I'm definitely going to miss some trunk-or-treating and some other events, so forgive me. Wincroft is having their outdoor event on the 24th from 3:45 to 5:30. Art Fusion is having their costume contest in Halloween Fest, which I will be judging on the 24th, from 5 to 8. Halloween is the 31st, as usual. And I am going to declare that trick-or-treating will commence at 5:00 p.m. and will end promptly at 8:30 p.m. I know none of you listen and stay out later, but 8:30 p.m. is the end of trick-or-treating.
We don't do that in Delco.
Perp you?
Yeah. When the lights go off, you stop going to people's houses.
That doesn't happen here. I get my doorbell ring many a times.
Oh, wow.
And if you haven't been on Halloween to Franklin and Wilson, Janet Friedline throws a huge block party for all the kids, and has treats and candy and games. And so, I will be helping her host that, because all the kids from the neighborhood come, and it is, like, a mass amount of children. So, please come out. Also, Election Day, November 4. Polls are open, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Please do not forget to vote. If you know anyone who is interested in becoming a police officer, they need to register for the written exam by 4:00 p.m. on the 3rd of November. And the test will take place on the 15th of November at Pottstown High School. And then, we have some stuff for Toster Turkey and Funky Santa, but I can announce those later. So, I thank you, and that concludes my report.
And from our borough manager, Mr. Kelller?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I've got a few important updates for you all tonight. We did, per council approval at the last meeting, issue an RFP for engineering services. So, we have responses due on November 7. And then, staff will be going through the applications and coming up with a short list, are looking for any council members that would like to participate on the interview committee, which are expected to take place in December. So, I'll send an email out to everyone on that, too. Walk and Thrive, that grant deadline is coming up on Friday. So, for anyone who hasn't applied, make sure you do before Friday, October 10. And this is for sidewalk repairs for street trees, or sidewalks that were damaged by street trees, and this is for qualifying homeowners with low to moderate income. And at this point, I think we've received about 14 or so applications, and we'll start to begin evaluate, evaluating them based on the grant criteria. And then, we do expect conditional award announcements, hopefully by early next year. And as the mayor mentioned, on September 25, we did host the Montgomery County Boroughs Association meeting here in Pottstown. So, we were happy to showcase our downtown amenities to municipal officials from across the county. We also heard from Josh Erman, who's the deputy executive director, on various training, education, and really a lot of legislative initiatives that they help boroughs out with throughout the Commonwealth. As Peggy mentioned, on the 18th of September, we had the Streetscape Information Session that we attended. And this is really trying to reimagine the downtown and western sections of High Street in terms of the gateway for that corridor, with the primary goal of developing an attractive design that can serve really as a compelling tool for securing grant funding in the future. So, more to come on that. And then, also, look for notifications soon, but we are going to be having a street, station area plan meeting, and this is the plan that DVR PC is working on for the passenger rail. And this plan, they're in the analysis phase right now, and they will be having a first public open house on November 6. And we haven't identified a location yet, but it's probably going to be held at Montgomery County Community College. So, we'll have something on our website once we have a final date on that. Riverfront Park, just a heads up there, we plan to plant about 200 trees in areas that were recently deforested by the Emerald Ash Bore. So, I know this has been a long time coming for the Parks Department to try to secure the funding and the labor resources necessary to replace the trees down there. And this will be done through volunteer efforts also, with the help of the Delaware River Keepers. And then, the trees will be purchased through funds secured through the PICO Green Region Program. So, big thanks to both those organizations for their contributions in Riverfront Park. Also, an update on the water meter replacement program that the authority is conducting. So, the borough and the authority are currently working with Lenningham Plumbing and Heating to replace approximately 2,005 eighth-inch residential water meters. Some of you might not know, but most water meters in the borough are 20 to 25 years old, and replacements are necessary to improve the billing accuracy, and also to implement electronic meter reading abilities, which will allow us with advanced notification in the event that there's a overage or an excess usage of water at a particular property, which would indicate a leak. So, that will be ongoing here through at least the next two quarters or so. But just a reminder that letters are being sent out to the properties that will go forward with the water meter replacements under this phase. It comes on borough letterhead. It tells them to contact Lenningham Plumbing and Heating. So, we just want to let everyone know that these letters are legitimate for borough correspondence. And any customers that do not receive this letter in this round should expect to receive notification letters in 2026, or possibly 2027. Update on the water plant coordination with the Delaware River Basin Commission. So, if you recall, a few weeks ago, we did have a pink water situation at the plant that was caused by excess potassium per magnate, but that was totally harmless. But I've been researching this, and what we now believe caused that was a normally high algae on the river that was caused by a release at Blue Marsh Dam. And we know that this year, they've had some really high algae problems at Blue Marsh. I think it was closed to swimming at some point as well. So, it looks like what is happening in this instance, and also when we go back to the instance that happened last year, this was also attributed to the time around when Blue Marsh did a release. And most people don't realize it, but Blue Marsh was built as a water, a flood reservoir for the Schuylkill River after Hurricane Agnes came through. So, it's actually a flood protection resource, but they do let out water to control various flows on the river at different times. And also, at the end of summer, they do let out water as well. So, we've been working now with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Delaware River Basin Commission, who control the releases at Blue Marsh. And they began notifying us in advance of when the releases are occurring. They're also working with us to coordinate the time of that release, so that they could release, we could let the water pass, in other words, not draw water at the time when they're doing a release. And then, once they're completed with the release, we'll then start drawing water again. So, we're going to do some pilot tests and see if this works out. But there's been good cooperation across multiple agencies, and we've improved our communication greatly in that regard as well. So, hopefully, those instances of, of the pink water, which again, is harmless, will be reduced. Mayor covered the civil service. My last reminder is that Monday is Columbus and Indigenous Peoples' Day, so council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 14. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. Now, tell us about the draft budget for 2026.
Sure.
You or Marley?
Yeah, it'll be both of us. I'm going to come down to the table. All right. Well, it's that time of the year when football season kicks off. There's pumpkin spice latte in the air, and it's budget season for municipal officials. So, we always look forward to this time of year with much anticipation, and a little bit of anxiety, too, if I'm going to be honest. But we've been working diligently over the past couple of weeks. And I have with me here tonight, Marley Boone, our Director of Finance, who has really put a lot of effort into the budget this year and in past years. So, we wanted to give you a preview tonight of where we stand. Just as a reminder, this is our initial draft budget. So, there's still a lot of things that, that are in flux, and we'll go over what some of those items are tonight. But it's our, it's our initial cut. There's still a lot of work to do to try to get better numbers, sharpen our pencils, and, and come back with a little bit of a stronger budget. But we think we're off to a good start here. So, usually, the process is that we present the draft budget in October, just to kind of refresh it for, for everyone. Then, in, in November, we, we like to present what we call like a pre-final budget, and ask council for, and not to exceed budget amount. Assuming that gets approved, staff continues to work on the budget after November to try to get that number even further below the not-to-exceed amount. And then, during that time, the, the tax rate and the military have to be advertised for a certain period of time by Borough Council in order to be able to pass it in time for the end of the year at the December meeting. in order to be able to pass it in time for the end of the year at the December meeting. So that's kind of the timeframe you're on with this. You'll hear from us two more times on various updates, but this is kind of just our initial cut. All right. So right now, where we stand currently is a budget deficit of $602,000. This would necessitate a millage increase of 7.53 mils across the all funds, and then a total millage across all funds of 15.871 mils. The total tax increase equates to about a 4.98%. And if we look at that in terms of a tax bill increase, what does that mean? Well, based on $100,000 of assessed property value, that comes to about 75.35 per household. So I think this is kind of, you know, coincidentally, I guess, pretty similar to where we came in last year for the original budget. But I guess that's a good thing because it means we're being consistent, and we don't have a lot of fluctuations in our expenses and our revenues. So this chart just shows a breakdown of the percent of millage per taxing fund. So by far, the most of the tax money goes to the general fund. It's 73.89%. And then after that, we've got 13% going to the fire fund, 8% going to the Parks and Rec Fund, and less than 2% going to the streetlights and the library fund. So that just kind of gives you a breakdown of how the different taxing funds are divided up in terms of dollars and cents. Before we look at the budget, what we like to do is look at the revenue trends that we've had this year and in previous years. And I guess the good news is that so far, the revenue trends look pretty good for us, especially in the area of taxes that are collected related to employment. So local enabling taxes continue to rise since 2020. We've had consistent job trends. We've had increases in wages. We've had a 5% increase so far in 2025 in earned income and a 7% increase in LST. So that certainly speaks to people getting paid more, more people working in the borough. Combination of that, you know, we're not really sure what that exact ratio is, but that's how that's derived. Transfer tax revenue, that's been pretty stable. I mean, we haven't seen the amount of transfers that we saw like right after the pandemic, but the property values are higher, so that is helping us. We increased our revenue budget for property transfer revenue about 6%. We still feel this is a conservative increase because we're well below the average collections of transfer tax the past three years. But we always like to remain very cautious with the residential market because it can be subject to fluctuations. There is interest rate cuts on the horizon. People are talking about the economy. So always good to be conservative when it comes to the transfer tax revenue or anything that might make somebody who wants to buy a house a little skittish, right? But I think with a lot of these things, what we're seeing is that the ongoing collaboration with Pottstown Area Economic Development, the Redevelopment Authority, to really work with private developers, dilapidated properties, to get these back in productive use and back on the tax rolls is really starting to pay off in terms of keeping our assessed values level, if not, you know, increasing a little bit. So this also helps us in terms of our building permit revenue, right? If we've got a vacant building that needs to have a total renovation, we're getting a lot more building permit revenue, which positively impacts our bottom line. So we've seen an increase in both these items year to year. And we do have some modest increases for this year. But again, we look back based on three years of our previous building permits because these can fluctuate to fluctuate, too. If you have a really big project come in, like, let's say, the Dwight City Group, that can kind of skew it. So we take the big projects out, and then we look at the average over the previous three years when we're looking at building permit revenue. Because the last thing that we want to do is overestimate our revenue. And then we plug in expenses that essentially are higher than what our revenue can pay for. So we try to keep our revenue estimates reasonable, but very modest at the same time. Our interest earnings still remain strong in terms of revenue. This has to do with the high interest rates. The Finance Committee made the decision to invest some of our reserves in certificates of deposits, which are, you know, instruments that are approved by the state for municipalities to invest into. So we are watching this. We are expecting the rates to get cut a little bit. So we expect a slight decrease in our interest earnings for this year. And then, you know, in terms of our approach to getting major infrastructure projects done, we look to partner. We look to find funding from grant agencies and basically leverage any kind of source outside of the local taxpayer that we can. And I think we've done a very excellent job at doing that over the past couple of years. We've been able to get a lot of meaningful projects completed without a lot of money to the taxpayer. So what we're doing is we're bringing the state, federal, county, and private funding into the borough and having less reliance on the taxpayer for these substantial projects. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Marley, and she's going to go through some of the projected expenditures as well as a highlight summary of the funds.
Thank you. These expenditures affect the entire budget. And we'll start with wages. AFSCME wages are contracted at 3%. That contract will end next year, I believe. Police wages are at 5%, and we are projecting management wages to come in at 3.5%. A few months ago, you approved the MMO expense for 2026. We know that it's $3.17 million combined for both the police and non-uniform pension plans. This was an overall increase of $15,000. And this is due to, in 2024, council elected the smoothing method, which saved the borough over $1 million in increased expenses for the pension plans over the past two years. The Boroughs 401A contribution is budgeted for $110,000. And as you know, we moved to a defined contribution plan for non-uniform employees to help reduce that cost of the MMO. But as employees retire and we have new hires, that 401A contribution will increase. We expect healthcare expenses to increase significantly. There was a recent report that stated, across the state of Pennsylvania, healthcare would increase at least 15 to 20%. We're still working to finalize those figures. Our workers' compensation expenses are projected to increase 26% and liability insurance 10 to 15%. This graph just kind of shows, over the past 20 years, how the tax assessments have declined. You can see they significantly dropped in 2017 and 2018, but they've begun to level out. So for 2026, we are only seeing a slight decrease to the assessment in about $804,000 from last year. And this actually only equates to about $12,000 in tax revenue. Again, with the decrease in assessment value, there continues to be properties that are tax exempt. From 2024, we are up 13 this year. And that lost revenue is projected at 2.2 million overall. Yes. This just, using the 2025 millage rates, this shows the total portion of real estate taxes that a property owner in Pottstown will pay. As you can see, kind of the meat of it is the school district and the borough and the county. Based on an average assessment of $100,000, I have listed the amounts that a property owner would be expected to pay. So the general fund budget is 17.7 million. Currently, we have a deficit of $425,000 with zero reserve funding as part of the budget. We are projecting a millage increase needed of .53 mils with an overall proposed millage of 11.702. Included in the general fund are capital purchases for the police department. They are requesting this year a patrol vehicle, camera upgrades for capacity storage, new bulletproof vests, and other civilian major capital purchases we'll go through on the next slide in our capital savings plan. The general fund budget also maintains OPEB funding in the amount of $250,000 and capital savings funding in the amount of $100,000.
Yeah. So as Marley mentioned, we continue to put funding into our capital savings plan. And we've really developed this over the past five years or so so that it can soften the blow when the borough needs to undergo a major capital improvement. If there's an issue with a bridge that needs to be fixed immediately, if there's a stormwater arch collapse. We have now gotten to the point where we have set money aside to try to plan for these things. And we've also developed alternative forms of revenue to help pay for these types of items as well. So right now, this is our short-term capital plan for 2026. We have a much longer-term plan that goes out, you know, over 10 years. But this is what we're looking at in terms of capital for next year. And most of this doesn't come out of the general fund, but it comes out of the savings that we have already set aside and the revenue sources that we have received from other entities, mainly the Borough Authority. So a couple of years ago, the Borough Authority dedicated $50,000 a year to address stormwater issues in the borough. Now, both of the Authority funding sources have restrictions on them. That can only be used for areas where we have sump pumps that are draining into the street. So the projects that we have done up on Gray Street and Feist recently, those were helped through the Authority stormwater funding with the idea that the Authority requires people to disconnect if they're connecting into the sewer. A lot of the properties don't have anywhere to go with the water, so where do they go with it in the street? When it goes into the street and there's not a stormwater inlet or a pipe to take it anywhere, it causes the street to degrade faster, which requires the borough to spend more money to have to pave it more frequently. It also causes issues where cars can actually freeze in the wintertime and get stuck in the curb. So that's something that we've been aggressively trying to address, and the Authority has been a big help there. The Authority also contributes as a part of the bulk callers that the sewer plant treats sludge for people that can't treat sludge on their own. Well, Pottstown is a place that they can bring it to for a fee that we charge them for. Those trucks going on our street have to pay a contribution towards roadway improvements that feed the wastewater treatment plant. So essentially, the roads that the trucks use to get to the wastewater treatment plant. We get $885,000 a year through that. We have $100,000 that the borough sets aside. We have some of the funding that was left over from ARPA that has been applied to some of these. So we are able to come up with some projected spending, about $1 million in next year, that doesn't really impact the general fund budget for the most part. We've got another Borough Police car through the savings plan. The Sidewalk Repair Grant Program, that's the program that I just talked about. We'd like to set another $50,000 aside for that. It's been a good program. We haven't actually launched it and implemented it yet, but we've gotten a lot of interest from outside entities. We received, I think, $200,000 from Montgomery County through their 2040 program to put into this. We received $100,000 from Senator Pennycook, which we didn't even have to ask for to put towards this. So people are interested in funding these kind of things. But if we can have some match money to put on the table to make it even more of an incentive, that'll help as well. Airport hangar roof replacement, we have that slated for $300,000. This is for the old. We did the maintenance hangar roof replacement this year. We need to do the old hangers either next year or the following year. Fleet replacement, we continue to work on that with licensing inspections. They would like a new vehicle to replace their Jeep, which is now costing more to maintain than it would to buy a new one. So our mechanic is recommending we get a new vehicle, one new vehicle there, and then we'll possibly look at another one in '27. And then we've got grant matches for stormwater arches in the amount of $250,000. That's coming from our long-term capital plan. Sallyport door for the police department as needed. Borough hall camera upgrades, we have those in there, $25,000. CDBG grant match, and this would be for the stormwater drainage that's coming into the street from sump pumps. We have $150,000. We haven't spent much of that Authority money yet, and I think they've been dedicating that to us for three or four years now. So we have $150,000 there that we can use towards that project. Moser Road Bridge, this is hopefully going to go into construction early next year. $850,000 project. We have a $450,000 grant. We need another $400,000 of matching. So this is one of the roadways that the trucks use to access the wastewater treatment plant. And we now have $400,000 in that fund. So now the borough doesn't have to come up with any match for Moser Road Bridge. It's all being paid for by the Authority. So those are our projected expenditures out of the capital savings for 2026. As we mentioned, we also have a long-term capital plan that's for future years. And in that, we have large-scale projects such as constructing, a grant match for constructing new airport hangers at the airport as well as stormwater arches and other bridge improvements as well. Take it away, Marley.
The Parks and Recreation Fund has a budget of just over $1 million. The current deficit is $32,000. There is zero reserve funding for that. It would need a millage increase of .04 mils for a total mils of 1.255 mils. Included in the Parks and Recreation Fund budget are several capital projects for Washington West Playground enhancements, Memorial Park Security Camera Expansion, and Pollock Park Improvements. This also funds the parks' capital savings plan in the amount of $60,000. And as, before I get into their capital needs, as you may recall, this time last year, I believe, we introduced sort of the same deficit and millage increase for the Parks and Recreation Fund. And last year, we were able to be creative and bring down that deficit. But this year, after we reviewed the budget at scrutiny, that scenario is unsustainable. So to maintain the Parks and Recreation Fund, we would need to have an increase in the millage.
And last year, we ended up pulling from reserves a little bit to close the deficit on the Parks Fund. And you can do that for a couple of years. But the more you pull from reserves... And you can do that for a couple of years, but the more you pull from reserves, eventually you have nothing left in reserves. So, it's not sustainable. So, that's why we're asking for a tax increase in the Parks Fund, so that we don't have to go into reserves.
For their capital needs, in 2021, the Parks and Recreation Fund established their own capital plan to project and fund future expenditures. For 2026, those expenditures amount to $137,000. I've listed the projects for Brookside Park and Pollock Park. For Brookside, it's replacement of playground equipment, park reorientation. For Pollock Park, there's the paving of the mini pitch and the contamination remediation. And then, they also have a kind of a long-term plan for the next five to 10 years for upgrades to the BMX Trilogy Cherry Street and Walnut Street Parks, Maple Street Park, and the Ricketts Center. The Fire Fund has a budget of just over $2 million with a deficit of $144,000. Again, this is with zero reserve funding. The millage increase would be .181 mils, which would total 2.211 mils. In their budget, they have capital expenditures for their annual fire equipment upgrades. And then, we also, after much review of this budget, we've met extensively over this. And we determined that the rise in the cost of the fire budget this year is mainly due to increase in operational expenses from each fire company, and it's due to inflation. So, again, we're asking for an increase in tax revenue in the millage for the Fire In doing so, we are going to look into capital savings funds to be invested to generate more money to put into their capital plan. And the Fire Fund does have a long-term capital plan that includes the money to be used towards an engine truck in 2028 and a ladder truck in 2037.
All right, so just to kind of wrap up for everyone, and we can take questions once we get through these next two slides, but just want to review for everyone kind of the effect of zero or minimal tax increases over the years. I know we do this every year, but it's always good to have a refresher. So, you can see by the chart and by the numbers to the right, 2005, 2006, we didn't increase taxes at all. And then, 2007 came, and we increased taxes 26%. And this was even before the whole Great Recession and everything. 2008 came, we had to increase by nine, 2009, 10, 2010, nine, right? And then, what did we do? We went back and we started doing zeros, ones, zero, 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 .28. 2018 came around, I think that was the year where we started out at 20%, and we got down to 12%, and then 19 was a 9%. And ever since then, you know, again, I think we've kind of preached this, that, you know, while we could try to get to a 0%, in the long run, it's usually not going to be sustainable because you're just pulling from reserves, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, and eventually, that's going to run out, and you're going to have to have a big tax increase. So, I think we've been pretty successful since 2020, keeping the tax increases relatively with the rate of inflation, or even sometimes below the rate of inflation, quite frankly. If you look at some of these, 2022, 2023, I mean, how do we pull that off? I don't know. But the point is, is that, you know, smaller increases over a longer period of time is better than no increase, and then followed by big increases. So, just to summarize for you, this shows the revenue and expenses projected for all the funds, along with the deficits in the general fund, Parks and Rec Fund, and the Fire Fund. So, again, $602,000 deficit as we sit here today. There's still areas where we think we've got some room to cut, and Marley and her team and I will be looking at that over the next month before we come back for another shot at this in November. So, at this point, we can open it up for any questions or comments. Sure.
For the year, I just want to, for 2026, the deficit, the total deficit we're looking at right now is the $602,000.
$602,000, yep, that's correct. That's the total deficit across all funds, that's correct.
But that's small.
It's a $66 million budget. Thank you.
We typically don't get our actual healthcare numbers until mid-November, somewhere around there?
Yes, usually mid-November. Sometimes, maybe we'll get them a little bit earlier, but we've gotten some numbers. We've had good news on negotiations from one of the carriers, but still, nothing is set in stone yet. And this year, we've made the decision to actually shop between more carriers than we would have in the past. So, we're really putting our negotiator to work this year and shopping the plan around to a lot of different carriers to see what the best price is that we can get. Of course, it's challenging because we have contractual obligations through the police union and through the HAFSMI union. So, really, when we're comparing plans, we really have to compare apples to apples. We can't cut from the plans that the bargaining units have already negotiated and agreed to. We can only take those plans to a different carrier and say, can you give us a better price on these exact same services?
Anyone else?
Here's what I want to ask. It's hard, man. It's hard, what you guys are doing. I imagine that you spend a lot of hours doing that. $602,000 is not an insignificant sum, especially when people aren't doing well. Groceries aren't going down. Oil is not going down. Troops are being sent into cities. It's not good here. The people need a break. The people need a break. I'm not sitting there saying that it's a 0%, but things aren't getting better, regardless of the nonsense you hear, how everything is wonderful. So, it would be wrong for me to not ask you guys to figure out a way or to work with us to make the people less hurt, okay? I don't know how to do that, other than to sit and work with you, how do we raise more revenue? It's not always about cutting expenses. It's not about cutting expenses. There's only so much you can cut, especially when you have contractual obligations. Can't cut them. So, we have to look at revenue, perhaps. I don't know. But what I do know is that, I don't know how much more the people can take in this country. So, if you could look at that, that would be awesome. We can talk, I'm always around to offer whatever I can to help the situation, to make it a little less onerous, because I do know that the police needs more money, and I do know that the Fire Department needs a lot more money. I know that, okay? But we have to figure out that we just can't keep getting it. We can't just keep asking the people to fill the hole. I know that's what we do, but we got to figure out another way. That's all.
I just came out of the Finance Committee meeting this afternoon, and we discussed all of that. This is not a final. This is the first draft. There are areas we can pursue and investigate, and it's no different from other years. We go through the same procedure, the same process. Some things we can't etch in stone until next month or maybe December. Some, we don't know the final number until mid-year next year because of contracts and that. But I assume our Finance Department is looking at everything, especially revenue right now.
Because I would imagine a fair number of your exempt properties are religious organizations?
I don't know, but they're exempt.
Is that fair to say?
Well, I mean, I think we see things like, you know, the hospital, right? That's determined to be tax exempt.
That was a big hurt.
Yeah, that's, I was just one. That's one. I mean, I was looking at numbers, and the numbers said 235, and it was 210, and now it's 235. So, that's just one, that counts as one.
I mean, there's two ways to look at it, like, what's having the biggest impact? I mean, obviously, something like the hospital's going to have the biggest impact, but where's the volume? When, you know, Marley shows we had, I think, 13 properties that went tax exempt. A lot of these are actually the veterans exemptions, that is a law from the state, that they get an exemption from paying the local taxes. So, if you look at it in volume, a lot of that, you know, is the veteran exemptions. If you look at it in terms of biggest impact, it's probably the hospital. But then, there's also other ones in there. You have nonprofits that are buying properties. That hurts us. It doesn't, you know, benefit us for them to buy a property from a tax revenue standpoint. I mean, although...
Confused. What do you mean by that? You mean like a nonprofit, the 501(c)(3) doesn't get a property tax exemption?
They do. They do, and it doesn't, so it doesn't benefit for us to have them buy property. It's much better if they would rent property from somebody, so it would still be taxable. So, I think that we need to look at very carefully when a tax exempt entity wants to buy property and develop it, whether that's the best thing for the borough, and there's limited things we can do to control that, obviously.
What hurts is we still provide protection, the police, fire, and everything else to those non-exempt. And I know in the past, we've asked for just contributions, and they're not very responsive.
I imagine. I imagine. But what I'm saying is, these people out here, man...
I know.
These people out here, man, okay? They're sick of it. They want help. And unfortunately, they look to us.
And rightly so. And we are still working on it. This is not done.
Great. That gives me hope.
Good.
I just have one question. What you mentioned, was that specifically the hospital that wouldn't give contributions, or was that multiple nonprofits?
Multiple. Yeah, we've sent out, you know, letters, emails, requests, you know, I've talked to, you know, individuals, and they're not legally obligated to do it. So, there's nothing, you know, I might talk to somebody, and the executive director might say, yeah, you know, we can look into it, but when they talk to their board, it's like, why would we approve this if we're not legally obligated to do it? I will say...
Is it the right thing?
That we do have a few. Do you know who the ones are that do contribute on a regular basis to us?
You could say...
If you don't know off the top of your head, that's okay.
It's not many, but...
It's the Montgomery County Housing Authority and the Wincroft School.
Okay. That's it.
That's it. That's it.
You could say most of them do not value the service we provide.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
As Marley, a couple of years ago, I think, our first presidentarian across the street from the high school, they contribute about $5,000, if I remember correctly.
They did, in the past.
And then, there's actually, those Latin churches on the five or 600 block of Walnut Street, they give a little, which is appreciated.
But they're not currently giving, right? It's just those two that you mentioned.
We would have to check who all's currently giving, but we know that those two have in the past, for sure.
Can we get a list of who is currently?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marley.
Okay, zoning for 764 North Charlotte. Mr. Ovi.
Yes, this property is currently a triplex, a three-unit apartment building in the TTN District. The applicant is seeking to convert it from a three-unit to a four-unit apartment building. This will require eight off-street parking spaces. The property provides seven, but that leaves it one short. As a result, the applicant is appealing the zoning officer's determination and also seeking a variance from Section 601.4A. This is not yet scheduled for a zoning hearing, I believe, but we'll list this for you for Tuesday night for potential action.
Good. And uniform bid?
Yes, so the uniform bids, we'll have a recommendation for you on Monday night, but just to give you some, I'm sorry, Tuesday night, even I did it. Yeah, Tuesday night, there are two options in the bid, but there's only one bidder. So, one bidder, two different options. They'll have a recommendation for which option that they want to go with.
Okay. Do that. Monday 13 is the Manatoni Green Corporation.
There'll be a recommendation for this at the Tuesday meeting as well.
All right, we'll list that. And Mr. Ovi, grading ordinance amendment.
This is a relatively minor ordinance amendment that was recommended by Licensing and Inspection. It does two things. It reorganizes Chapters 9, Grading and Excavating, and Chapter 26, Water. And then, also, what it does is deal with grading permits. When a property owner causes certain amount of earth disturbance, they're required to get a grading permit, and the grading permit requires them to manage that properly. What Elle and I found is there's no great mechanism on the backend to confirm that the property owner complied with the grading permit. So, what this ordinance amendment would do is define, you know, what would qualify an as-built plan, and then require it in circumstances that the property owner submits an as-built plan, so that Elle and I can compare what was required with what's actually done on the property. And we'll list this for Tuesday evening, unless anyone has any questions.
Good. And while I have you, the Novak Field Lease Agreement.
Yeah, the Novak Field Lease Agreement. The current lease was assumed by the Pottstown-Potts Grove Little League. That lease is expiring now at the end of the year. With a new party to the agreement, Michael Lenhart and Chuck thought it'd be a good idea to redo the lease. It would be a two-year lease for the fields. It would be a base rent of $100, which would escalate to $1,000 if less than 30% of the participants are from Pottstown. And it also increased the insurance, minimum insurance requirements for use of the fields. Unless there's any questions, we'll have that listed also for Tuesday.
I have a question for the last one. Yeah, grading ordinance? Has been determined what would trigger that grading plan? Is it square footage of, you know, surface disturbed, or what would trigger that?
Yeah, correct. It's triggering the total square footage that's disturbed, and I forget what the trigger is.
There's a couple of different thresholds in the level for whether it's just like a plan or grading plan, or so. Yeah, we can get back to you with that answer.
Yeah, I can get it from Monday night, and also tell you that Ordinance Review Committee is looking at what those levels are. So, that's being analyzed separately.
I'm just concerned, like, if someone does flyer bids and stuff around their house and does different grading things, and, you know, does some digging and disturb their, you know, their, you know, their property, if that would somehow trigger something.
Yeah. And I can address it more Tuesday night, not Monday night. But, yeah, there's two pieces to it. This doesn't change what those standards are. It just makes sure that if you trigger it, they can enforce it at this point. But Ordinance Review Committee, that's one of the things on our agenda for next week, is to reevaluate what those levels are for the trigger. So, I can give you more information on Tuesday night, Councilor Kirkland.
All right, street closures. All right, street closures.
Yes, we have a number of them this evening. So, uh, this is the Halloween trick-or-treating, October thirty-first, five to nine P M. This will be Wilson and Franklin Street to Diamond Street. And this is by Janet Friedline, she does this every year.
Wincroft?
Um.
You know that one?
Yes, the next one is the Wincroft Closure, uh, three forty-five to five thirty P M. They do this every year as well.
All right. Anymore, oh yeah, YWCA.
Uh, this is also regularly done by the YWCA. They're asking for a street closure, October twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, eight A M. to six P M. And October twenty-fifth, twenty fi- twenty-five, ten A M. to four P M. This closes the eastern half of the three hundred block of King Street from North Charlotte, uh, to Evans. There's barricades at Charlotte and Evans, um, leaving access to Borough Parking Lots Three and Four. That'll be maintained. And then there's also through access maintained for local businesses and residents during the event as well.
Okay, toss your turkey.
This is the, uh, annual toss your turkey. This will be College Drive Keystone Boulevard, um, and it will go down College Drive and Hanover Street and then College Drive down to Keystone Boulevard. So that's, uh, November twenty-seventh, eight thirty A M.
Right, Funky Santa.
Uh, Funky Sam- Santa, this is similar, uh, College Drive at Hanover Street and College Drive at Keystone Boulevard, December seventh, from eight A M. to ten P M.
Okay. Uh, we have one five-year term to expire for Harb. Construction Code Board of Appeals, one three-year term. Environmental Advisory Council, two three-year terms. Any applicants for those? No, okay. So we will hear from our citizens that are here.
Quickly, President Ween, before you do that, uh, Councilor Kirkland, uh, Councilor Proskel was right. It's five hundred square feet or more, which would trigger the grading permit.
All right, um, first up, uh, we have Julie Miller, please.
Good evening, councilmembers, I'd like to cede my five minutes to my business partner.
Okay, um, next up we have Art Miller.
So speaking, looking for the ten minutes between the two of us.
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, so my name is Art Miller. Uh, my family owns three twenty-four East King Street and three twenty-three East High Street. My motivation here tonight is solely for what I believe to truly be in the best interest of our borough. I'm a volunteer board member of the New Business Improvement District, which I was very much against when it was proposed, but I did my homework and decided if it was going to be, then it would be a, a good opportunity for me to get involved in bettering our town. And if it doesn't, uh, produce the intended results, then we'll get rid of it. But I'm volunteering my time and energy for the betterment of Pottstown. So what I have to say here is based on that. So I have a multitude of reasons to discuss why this YWCA application for the King Street multiple-day closure should be denied. Uh, but first, some background relevant information that you need. So the operation access for three twenty-three High Street is via its private lot on three twenty-four King Street. It's essential for the daily business operations for getting customer projects into and out of the shop and receiving deliveries. Creative Kitty Care employees and customers use the public parking lot accessed via King Street for parking, drop-offs and pickups. Birthright's on King Street and their only access is one, that, one on the King Street. Uh, the residents of three twenty-two King Street are a home-based construction business with their garage and their supplies in their parking area. And they need to get their trucks in and out of their parking area every day. And in order to do this, they must traverse the area of the mural that we're talking about here shortly. So I've spoken with them and they do not want the road shut down. And they did sign the YWCA paperwork, but it was purely to avoid the, uh, retribution. So what are reasons for denying this thing? Well, first of all, this street closure and mural painting should never have happened in the first place in twenty-one. When that application for the closure was submitted, it only had ten signatures. So that's well below the required seventy-five percent of consent. Uh, so obviously nobody in the borough validated who was affected and it just went through. Uh, so for the application for this year, I went around and I spoke with the affected residents and I have twenty-five percent signatures to, that people do not want it. So that alone is cause to deny their application. So some of them, they did sign the paperwork, but they didn't know what they were signing. They were duped into signing it. Because when I told them what they signed, they were surprised and they were immediately opposed and signed my paperwork, saying, yeah, no, we don't want the road shut down for three days, basically. And from, and from history, it goes overnight because they don't abide by the, uh, permit. So if you gotta mislead people to get your signatures, what you're doing is wrong. So next, the YWC has repeatedly violated the terms of the permit. Last year and in twenty-three and twenty-two, the streets were supposed to be closed at seven, opened at six, Thursday and Friday nights. Well, they didn't. They kept the streets closed for the solid three days. So it's a violation of the permit that was granted. Uh, there is supposed to be access to the residential units, the public parking lots, three and floor, and the businesses on King Street from the eastern end, like, which is discussed. But what happens in reality is when the YWC gets those barricades, they block it off and they make it impassable. So I've gone out there, I moved barricades, I put up signage saying, yes, it's open to these businesses. And I go back in my shop, I go out a few hours later and the barricades are back in the way. So they repeatedly block off the street, again, violating their permit. So there's not any other event that happens in Pottstown that closes a highly-traveled road for three continuous days and nights. And make no mistake, this road is highly-traveled. It's the connector to Route one hundred that everybody comes down King Street when I get off Route one hundred. So I mean, even the low show is twelve hours, Pottstown nights is eight hours, but the road is opened specifically at times when they're supposed to be reopened. Third, this mural is a sign. It makes a political statement, which makes it a sign. So that violates Municipal Code, Chapter twenty-seven, Part seven, seven oh three, number ten, that no sign or structure shall be placed in a public right-of-way. It also violates Chapter twenty-seven, Part seven, seven oh four, of prohibited signs item number ten, that signs that exhibit statements, words or pictures of an obscene or pornographic subject are forbidden. There's many people that find that expression obscene. So what is the process to determine obscenity? There isn't one. So since that's a question, that should definitely have this thing on hold until there's a process to determine whether it's obscene or not to, uh, people. So then I have a liability issue. Murals in traffic lanes are a distraction to drivers, causing a hazard. So imagine someone rear-ends someone at that traffic light or hits a pedestrian where that mural is because they were distracted by the mural. Well, I'm thinking that's a lawsuit waiting to happen that the borough should be concerned about. I've been in these meetings here and heard of people being concerned about lesser things than people getting killed by a car. So, five, this street painting is not a beautiful case, beautification mural. Black Lives Matter is a political message. And actually, a Pew Research Center survey in May of this year found that forty-five percent of U.S. adults oppose that movement. So murals are for beautification, not messages. Public taxpayer-funded streets are inappropriate places for political messages, especially messages that nearly half of the population opposes. So who's to say what political messages are allowed on the street? So as long as that mural exists, the precedent is set that if some other organization wants to come in here and write on the street, you can't stop it. So what if a group, if an extremist group wants to come in and paint Heil Hitler? Or, or Abrekma Frye, which was on concentration camps saying, work sets you free? Or how about Angels Forever, Forever Angels, you know, that's Hells Angels. What if they get their act together and they wanna put that on the street? Or hey, I know everybody's gonna love this, how about somebody comes out and wants to do King Donald? I mean, my God, what, the exposure we have with having a public message on the street is ridiculous. So I think it's in borough, in the borough's best interest to stop this nonsense before it becomes a bigger problem. Close this can of worms while you still can, let that mural fade away or actively paint over it and get rid of it. You know, there's other things that can be done to promote that kind of unity that they think they're promoting that they're not. So I'm gonna get a little bit more uncomfortable here. So some people say that the Black Lives Matter slogan on the street is, it's not affiliated with the organization Black Lives Matter. But how does anyone actually know that? They don't. So that organization, it's been exposed to be, uh, corrupt. It's been the recipient of millions of dollars extorted from major companies through threats of protests and organized boycotts. And then those funds have been embezzled by their leadership for their own personal gain. That organization has violent, community-dividing positions. Uh, quoting from the front page of their website, it says, and I'm quoting, "It's still defund the police." And then below that it says, "We envision a future fully divested from police, prisons and all punishment paradigms." So it's this soft-on-crime position that's directly responsible for releasing a violent individual fourteen times that slaughtered Arena Zarutka. If you've seen that, any reporting on that, she's on North Carolina Light Rail Train on August twenty-second. So why was she slaughtered? She happened to sit in a train seat in front of a historically violent black man. He'd been arrested fourteen times and released. He decided to slit her throat in public on that train and slaughter her because there was a white girl sitting in front of him. Uh, and he was heard, as he got up, he said, "I got that white girl."
You have thirty seconds, sir.
Okay. So, so why is this relevant? Well, Black Lives Matter condones this behavior. The official Black Lives Matter position on their social media pages regarding this horrific slaughter was, and I'm quoting them, their little video says, "Black people have the right to violence, all oppressed people have a right to violence." And I'm going to tell you something, it's like the right to pee. You gotta have the right time and you gotta have the right place, you gotta have the appropriate situation. And I'm absolutely convinced that this is it. So that's the vile disgusting position of the Black Lives Matter.
That's your time, sir.
Organization, okay? Now, continue with my five minutes?
That was ten minutes.
No, there's no way.
Yeah, that was.
Definitely, I, okay.
Yeah, you can check the video, it's ten minutes.
Okay. All right, so I have copies of my reasoning and I have copies of all clips, news articles, all that stuff today. You're all, would you all like it?
Sure.
I pass.
Take one.
Next.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you for your, thank you for your time and attention.
Okay. How about, uh, Councilor's discussion? Councilor Proskel?
Just looking forward to all the pipe and roadwork to be done.
That's about it.
Councilor Braden?
Um, I'd like to touch on what Peggy said. I have been to, in the last couple of weeks, Opavera and Contessa and the food at both places are very different, but very delicious. Um, I highly recommend visiting both of them multiple times.
I'm an Italian councilwoman, can you tell everyone how Contessa was?
Well, it's not necessarily Italian, it's kind of fancy dishes. Um, like I got some kind of pasta, I didn't even know what it was. It was brown, but it was good, so. I can't exactly say that yet. And I do believe, I think I saw it in the window, they're working on getting, um, their liquor license, that's Contessa. And, uh, so right now it's B Y O B or they have mock cocktails. Um, but both of the places were wonderful, I highly recommend them. Um, and I have a question for you, Justin, if we can talk about it later. At the corner, next to the apartment buildings, um, on South Street. When you come around that corner, it is pitch black. I don't know if we can do, get some kind of light? There's lights halfway up South Street, but that corner walking around is quite dark. So maybe we can try to come up with a solution for that.
Yeah, could you just send me the exact location and then I'll look into it?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll send it to Alexa. She's pointing behind you, I got it.
Get my attention, too, yeah.
That's all I have.
Nothing? Councilor Minosstra?
Uh, one thing, uh, we have the beginnings of another situation in our town, okay? Uh, and it's not the.
The train.
The train, no. Um, there is yet another economic driver trying to move into the downtown, okay? And they have been very loud and there's been a lot of motorcycles that are coming in and out of the town. They are making people uncomfortable, okay? And they were, um, enforced last week. There was a funeral and some of these organizations have ties to rather famous or infamous motorcycle groups. I don't think that's what we need in the downtown, we have enough problems down there.
Councilor Kirkland?
It's just great that we live in the United States. It's, it's, it's a great thing that we live here. A lot of people come for a public forum and lie and exaggerate and just put out political statements that's untrue and not even verified, uh, or vetted. Um, but it's great, it's great, it's great that we allow situations where people can come and, and, and spew their agenda. And, um, it's, it's just great, United States is an amazing place. That's it.
Hey, Ryan.
I just wanna say I appreciate all of you, thank you for being here. Um, and I also forgot that I participated in the second annual tournament or mini-golf last weekend, which I have to say was fantastic, so thank you, Mike. Um, and there was a great turnout, great fundraiser, it was a wonderful day, beautiful, beautiful day. So, thank you again, that was a lot of fun.
Uh, I have nothing more to add, but, uh, we will have an executive session, we'll be dealing with litigation and personnel. We will not be returning, so meeting adjourned.